What a face. Oh, good morning. How's everybody doing? Welcome to the show that's on in the morning. I'm here with the world famous cultural attache to St. John's County and St. Augustine. We got Troy Blevins in studio. I do my intros right away, right?
You're doing great.
We got a great show in store for you today. Pete is on assignment as always. We love him and hopefully he's traveling safe back to the nine oh four. Excited to see what he has in store on his travels. How was your fourth of July, sir?
It was excellent.
Did you have an excellent one?
Yes, it was excellent. We we went to the rooftop.
Tell me.
It was nice.
Yeah.
It kind of act like it was gonna rain, but it never really did.
That's kind of perfect for fireworks.
Yeah, it was perfect. So it wasn't like blazing hot.
Yeah.
Enough breeze to keep the buggies away.
How was the music? I know this is a thing for Pete. So how was then the music synced to the fireworks? Did it work out this year? Did it look good?
Well, because we're far enough away, there's always a little bit of a delay.
Okay.
It's hard for me to give that.
To give that gauge. Okay.
So I don't know if it was because of the delay.
Yeah.
Or if it was because it wasn't synced right.
Do you think foot traffic was up?
Much, much more this year than last year.
No, okay.
Much more this year than last year.
Because I remember the fireworks were a moment back in the day, right? It was like a thing. Yeah, and they sort of died down a little bit.
Last year was on a Tuesday, and I think that really, really hurt it. This year was on a Thursday, so people kind of made it a really long weekend like we did.
Dude, that extra day was incredible. That was so nice. On that Friday was just a nice like get ahead in life. Like I'd like literally like turn my house inside out and cleaned everything and I feel good.
Well, I still had to work, but I mean, I understand like, you know, wanting to sleep in and then not actually getting to sleep.
True, true. Yeah, yeah.
Another thing that kind of, because wanting to sleep in my assistant Ricky Get Better, he's not feeling well.
Praise up for Ricky.
So Get Better, we had some people that were at the location at like seven thirty, so I had to rush to get down there to the to the building and then we lost power at Veterans Village.
Of course.
So I had to rush over there. So that by eight o'clock Friday morning, I'd already been to two of my jobs.
Did you get power back up? Did you have the generator?
Yeah, yeah, we got power back up.
Thank goodness. Okay, well, good. Well, we got a show ahead. I'm very excited to talk about. We've got St. Augustine City Commissioner wonders if the city can require staff to take breaks for hot employees. Next up, we got a sixty year old bicyclist.
Wait, when you say hot.
There we go. I was hoping you were gonna jump here. Okay.
When you say hot, you mean like really attractive.
I meant like temperature high.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay, now we can go.
Okay.
Is that what we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about.
The temperature's up. I mean, there's two ways to take that.
Right, exactly. That was my tricky headlines today. All right, next up, we got a sad story to actually tell you. Sixty year old bicyclist struck by car in St. Augustine. Neighbors believe that speeding was involved. We'll get into that. I know it's a beloved human being who does a lot of great things for us, so we will talk about that. We also have a moronic Monday story leading into mid-level celebrity Justin Timberlake and Tiger Woods opening up a sports bar. Sure. And then finally, we have hundreds gathered in St. Augustine to raise money for St. John's County Firefighters Fund. We talked to them last week. This is really cool. So we've got some results that we're gonna be talking about. And you and I are gonna talk about a little bit about Dunning with Dignity and that wonderful program and how our community can rally some support. But before we get into all that, we're gonna talk to about our friends at Bozard Ford Lincoln. They've kicked off seventy-five years serving St. Augustine and Northeast Florida. For three generations, their team and dealership have grown to meet the needs of this great community. The Bozard campus at I ninety-five and State Road sixteen is full of inventory from Ford and Lincoln along with great selection of pre-owned vehicles of all makes and models in that area. We love the state of the art service departments, Quick Lane for express service and parts and accessory shops that can take care of all your needs during the time you own your vehicle. And no visit to Bozard is complete without a stop at Ford's Garage to enjoy one of their signature burgers. We gotta try another one of those nine oh four now burgers, right? At least get one to go. From delivery of your new car in your own driveway to mobile service of your fleet of company vehicles or anything in between, the team at Bozard Ford Lincoln is ready to meet your needs in a way that is designed exclusively for you. Just let their family take care of your family. They're Bozard Ford Lincoln and they're driven to inspire. Hey, 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 the Florida Man Games. Hey there, folks. Don't you know the wildest games are about to blow? The Florida Man Games are back for round two, March first, twenty twenty-five. It's coming for you, boo. Mulleted athletes rise and shine. Show your Florida pride. It's time to shine. Submit your team. Don't be late. Get your tickets and seal your fate. Florida sumo evading arrest backed by demand. They're the best of the best. New events coming wild and bold, more fun and madness. Let the stories to be told. Tickets are now on sale ahead of the date. Get them early. Don't tempt the fate. Visit FloridaManGames.com and lock in for the madness to fray. All right. I'm excited about Florida Man Games.
It's gonna be awesome.
You and I are part of the team this year. Very, very cool. I'm loving working with you too. We're having a great time putting some really cool magical moments together. This is gonna be an epic, epic, epic moment.
And I wrote out on, you know, because we're off and I can never take a day off.
God bless.
Just my world doesn't allow me to do it.
Only work.
On Fourth of July, I was like, all right, we're gonna do two in one. We took the Jeep out to the fairgrounds and did a ride around.
Oh.
And just, I mean, it's gonna be so much fun. It's so much more space and what we can do. But the really wild thing was is we're driving back and you know, in Florida, you can see a storm. So we're in the Jeep. It was like, you know, weatherman should know when the storm.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't predict. So I'm about a half mile up. I can see the storm. So we did a quick U-turn and did a Fourth of July lunch at Jim's Place.
Oh, how was that? Jim's Place is so good.
Really, really good burgers.
That's so fun. Good.
But we were able to wait up, wait out the little flash storm and.
When you were out there, did you see like the campgrounds where all the RVs are gonna be and stuff? That's cool. That's gonna be a cool moment.
We saw what kind of power it had and amps and, you know, there's, it's, it's, it's a really cool setup.
Yeah, I'm excited. It's gonna be an awesome, awesome turnout. So yeah, get your tickets, theFloridaManGames.com. It's gonna be magic, baby. It's gonna be amazing. We also gotta give a quick shout out to Great Expectations, Elise Med Spa, Fides Roofing, BHF Insurance, St. August Pizza, Shiba Hut Toasted Subs, Griffin Service, BNS Signs, and Chris Lucero Bail Bonds, which we'll talk about a little bit later. But yeah, I know that you're gonna kick us off here on this beautiful motivational Monday with a question of the day, sir.
My question of the day, what inventor do you wish you knew who invented it? So like, you know, it's one of those things. It's like part of your everyday life. You want me to go first, you know, so that like you can kind of give the feel of what I was talking about. See, I love cheese.
Okay.
I wanna know who invented cheese. That person should be more famous than Thomas Edison in my mind. I love cheese.
Or did they die an early death? Because it's essentially mold, right? It's coagulated.
Well, I think it's kind of a dairy product.
It's amazing. I'll give it to you. So can you rank some of your favorite cheeses over here? Like if you had a go-to cheese, what is your go-to cheese?
I actually like pepper jack on about everything.
Not Colby Jack?
Colby Jack. Colby Jack's always a solid. So like when I do a grilled cheese, I use American, Colby Jack and pepper jack.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So and the combination's amazing.
Yeah.
All right.
But white American or yellow American?
Well, I'm a yellow American.
God bless. Okay.
I'm just closing up arteries as we talk. But the other one, I mean, the one I probably eat the most of is mozzarella. It's on pizza.
Right, it's on everything. It's a major staple.
Anything that's Italian, you gotta, oh, you gotta have the mozzarella.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You gotta have mozzarella.
Whoever invented cheese, thank you.
Seriously, that is a gift to the earth. Yeah.
I think Blake and I might have to do this as our bollocks this week, like inventions.
Dive into that, yeah.
Inventions of things you wouldn't think of.
Yeah, like odd invention. Like, okay, so my answer is the button. Like who came up with that? Like to fasten clothes together with a button, just the mere easy slip through the old app you there.
Well, I know the zipper came out in the late eighteen hundreds.
Okay.
So because when I see people in like our royalty or whatever, I'm saying royalty and they have zippers.
That's right.
Like, come on, man.
Did they, oh, like the period costumes? Okay.
They didn't have them in fifteen, sixteen.
No, they had corsets.
You know, they had laces and they had, I think they had buttons by then. I don't know when the buttons.
They didn't have Spangks back then? I know, it's not an easy life.
No, no.
I will tell you, I had, I was a stage manager for an opera. It was like one of my like prereqs that I had to do in college and I had to get opera singers into corsets behind the stage. Dude, I'm not getting you like one leg on the back. Oisting everybody in. The boobies were like in the face.
Like the knee in there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It was, it was nuts. Absolutely. All right. Well, I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys have in comments on which inventor do you want to meet or understand? Or yeah, that's gonna be great.
Kelly said the inventor of AC, but I know Carrier had something to do with that.
That's a good, that's a good one. That person needs a raise.
Yeah.
Yeah, like every year kind of race. Yeah.
Rebecca said zip ties also an important, I can't live without those.
I'm sure some criminal probably came up with them. All right. Well, that's good. Well, we move into quick check of the weather, Troy.
Uh, afternoon rain.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna say what time.
You can on this show.
Oh, I'm allowed?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's gonna rain at three twelve today.
Three twelve. Let's make a note of three twelve. Yeah, I expect all messages to Troy at three twelve.
I want reports from all over the county because it just has to rain somewhere within the sound of my voice for me to be right.
I don't know, I don't know about you, how you guys feel, but we totally need some rain. Like, yeah, seriously, I'm pluviophilus over here. I really need some rain. Ugh. Well, that quick check of the record is, or, slow down, quick check of the weather is brought to you by Great Expectations Realty. They can sell your home, your business and everything in between. Check them out today at geauction.com or gerealty.us. We now go high with the streets above the sky and nine oh four traffic team. Rick, what's going on in St. John's County today?
Dun, 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 dun. I am Rick with your traffic report. It's actually moving smooth. We've got a cool little video up there on the top right. Check this out. Car was driving in the fast lane. Truck lost the wheel. Car jumped. Didn't happen in St. Augustine, but.
Oh, thank God.
Nonetheless.
Oh, my goodness.
So keep your eyes peeled. Stuff like this could happen any second. So keep both hands on the wheels, eyes on the street and seat belts on.
This is why I wear a helmet in the car.
Hug your loved ones when you leave.
God bless.
Never know when you're gonna go flying across the highway.
That's ridiculous, right?
Yeah.
But how was traffic fourth of July for everybody? Were you guys good? Nice and smooth or?
My walk was nice.
Okay, okay. So you didn't have to worry about, you didn't get in the car very much?
No, not, not once it got busy.
Yeah. And did it, did it get busy? Was there congestion? Did you see anything?
Well, Blake, Blake was hesitant to go park at the parking lot, you know, but Blake, Blake.
Did you guys sell spots?
Yeah, because Lotus was closed, so we sold spots there. So it filled up in about forty-five minutes for him.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was pretty busy.
Dude, speaking of Lotus, shout out to Lotus. Pretty amazing. Yeah, the James Beard Dinner, like that was amazing.
Yeah, and there's.
That's, that's in our town, everybody. Lotus, Barry Honan. Yeah, amazing.
Well, and not just that, James Beard's coming here in September also, so.
Can I interview?
The group from James Beard's coming here and there's gonna be a host of a couple of different chefs that are gonna host.
Fantastic.
Like the fact that not just him going there and bringing it back is even more impressive, so.
But that's like an upper echelon kind of moment for any chef to experience, right?
Without a doubt.
That's pretty dope. Well, that traffic report brought to us by Elise Med Spa. Are you looking for a relaxing and rejuvenating experience? Well, look no further than Elise Med Spa. At Elise Med Spa, they specialize in providing their clients with a range of luxurious spa treatments, advanced medical aesthetic procedures, whether you're looking to unwind with a soothing hydrofacial or enhance your natural beauty with Botox, derma fillers or laser treatments, their expert staff will work with you to develop a personalized treatment plan tailored to your unique needs and goals. It's beauty on your terms. Elise's state of the art facility features the latest technology and equipment and ensuring that you receive the highest quality of care with the most effective results possible. Plus, Elise's relaxing and inviting atmosphere will leave you feeling refreshed and rejuvenated. I'm not kidding you. They're the above, above and beyond the rest. They're amazing. Check them out at Elaismedspa.com. All right, let's get this into this here. We've got news story number one today. St. Augustine City Commissioners wonders if the city can require staff to take breaks from the heat despite the new Florida law. I think this is an important one to talk about. St. Augustine City Commissioner is addressing the issue of employees providing staff breaks from the excessive heat. This discussion arises after Florida's new law restricts local governments from mandating breaks during work hours. Now, the federal government is also entering the conversation. City Commissioner Barbara Blonder is advocating for local action. Quote, "I want the city to be able to implement some policies that protect our workers," unquote, Blonder told First Coast News. Blonder has consulted with city attorney to explore the cities that can mandate water and rest breaks for the heat, for the, during the heat for city employees. This includes archaeologists who often spend hours, oh, we love them over there, outdoors and, oh, yeah, on the digging sites. I can see this here. Oh, Andrea White. Yeah, she's in this article. Working under a tent, three, going into a three-foot deep pole. They noted that this particular site that they're working on has reached a temperature of ninety-nine degrees with a heat index of over a hundred and seventeen, even in the shade. That's crazy. So what do you think about this? You think it's a good idea?
I can tell you this. I think everybody who works out in the parks and are the maintenance guys out in the fields in the middle of the summer setting up the ball fields are laughing at that ninety-nine.
Really?
No, they've been doing it for years. You're out there, you're, you're doing the lawn workers and that's the reason why roofers go to work so early. Like when you're complaining about, oh, he's working at like seven o'clock in the morning. Yeah, he's working at seven o'clock in the morning because at three o'clock he'd die.
Right, right, right.
You know, so you have a little sympathy. The guy's gotta make a living.
True. I mean, that's true.
Sorry it inconvenienced you at that moment. This guy's trying to put food on his family's plate.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I think it's good. I think they, they need to encourage. I don't know if they can enforce it. I think they need to encourage them to take, take their necessary breaks to be cool.
I think that's what the law means, right?
Yeah, that's the intent of it.
Your idea.
That's the intent of it. One of the things that was really bad when I was Parks and Recreation Director is the, we use work crews from the jail, from the Hardwick Hotel.
Okay.
It was.
I'm not mad about that.
Back to, back, back in Sheriff Perry days and Sheriff Shore's days, but they would get called in if it got over ninety degrees.
Okay.
And my guys would have to keep working.
Oh, of course, of course.
Because I mean, we still had to get the ball field set up. We still had to do everything that was required. I mean, the grass doesn't stop growing.
Yeah.
So.
Well, what resources do you guys have out there?
We, we, we make sure they have coolers set aside, water, you know, there's an ice machine. I mean, we have a strategy of what you need to do to take care of yourself. And some of them still, I mean, I mean, heat gets on you.
Yeah.
When that bear gets, I don't know if you've ever come close to heat exhaustion before, but it's, it's a horrible, horrible feeling.
When you wanna keep going forward, but your body shuts down, that's a whole nother level of, yeah, existence.
Yeah, when, when, when things start closing in and you're like, okay, okay, I gotta, you know, gotta pull it together.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, it's hard to explain if you've never had experienced anything with heat exhaustion. And it's nothing, I mean, your, your organs can actually shut down, so.
So what would this rule actually do? So they would take like a fifteen, they would be not mandated, but suggested they take a fifteen minute break after a certain period of time or something?
I would assume they'd get like an air conditioner, but I mean, a lot of my guys, I mean, we, we would try and get them to do that, but they they didn't like the cooling down and, and heating back up again. They didn't like, you know, they'd rather just stay.
Right, stay even keel.
Stay in the even keel. And this is where, where.
That's interesting.
This is where it gets dangerous. I mean, a lot, I mean, you know, we, we really had to encourage, I mean, make sure they were drinking as much water as they possibly could keep in.
I've, I've known some athletes that have died actually going through like a, you know, a marathon situation and a heat exhaustion actually. A swimmer, like an Olympian drowned in, I believe it was Dubai, maybe about fifteen years ago, Fran Crippen. And it was incredible to see this monster of an athlete, this incredible human being, this thoroughbred, and literally get taken out because of the, because of the heat exhaustion. It's just, that blows my mind. I, I really do. I don't know what's the better route, whether they take the break, like you said, or they, like you said, keep it even keel. But interesting though, and I'm always interested in like what resources you guys have, like on the field and out there.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I mean, like the archaeologists, I mean, and that's a very unique, unique field because I mean, they're, they're like, my guys that were working on, in the field for me were about ninety percent out in the heat.
Yeah.
You know, they, they would get ten percent, like they'd work, you know, in a, in a indoor situation. But these archaeologists, they're probably, you know, days they're not digging, they're inside.
Right, right, right.
So their body isn't as acclimated as some of these other, other people that are, that are used to working in the heat constantly. Like, like a roofer, a roofer knows.
I couldn't imagine.
When they're going, going in, but what it's gonna be, like they're looking at the weather report going, yeah, today's gonna suck.
Yeah, right. Yeah, a little neck fan isn't gonna do anything.
Yeah, no, no, that's not gonna do anything but get in your way.
Golly.
But I mean, I, I understand the intent of it. It's just whether or not you can get the employees, because most of these guys have a task to do and they're just so focused on the task, they don't wanna stop.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I want your focus on that.
It's a hard, hard balance.
Yeah.
We always had supervisors going around and when the supervisor got there, it would almost create a break for the people. So that might be what it takes to do is somebody going there and saying, okay, hey, let's, let's have a little meeting here.
Right.
And give them a cooldown, cooldown moment that they don't even realize it's happening.
Yeah. We got the archaeologists coming out on Thursday, so we can talk to them too about it and like how this would benefit for them.
But I could just see being in the middle of that.
Yeah, me too.
You're almost like.
You're in heavy khaki.
You're thinking you're finding something. You're like, okay, I'm not stopping right now.
Right, oh my gosh, right.
I know, I know my personality wouldn't let me stop.
Right, true. Especially when you find something like that. Yeah. Well, more to come on that one. I guess we'll, we'll do some follow-up and see what goes on, but I think it's a good idea, you know, for everybody to figure out what's the best for their terms, however that looks like.
Yeah. When you start feeling getting chills in ninety degrees, you know your body's in trouble, so.
Yeah, that's not menopause. I know, I get you.
Down as quick as you possibly can.
When you stop sweating is the problem.
Yeah.
Don't stop sweating. If you stop sweating, it's time to go inside.
Literally, my little name should be Slep.
Feel those tingles in your fingers and you're like, all of a sudden you're like getting the chills and you're like, oh, I'm not good.
Yeah, yeah.
And to me, it's, I don't know if you guys have ever blacked out before.
You started explaining it. Gets tunnel vision.
Everything starts like literally start closing. It's like there's darkness here and all of a sudden you're doing this.
Oh, God, don't jinx me.
And unless you can kind of, it's almost like a G-force, unless you can kind of hold everything in to to take in a breath, you're gonna go down. You're gonna go out.
And I'm a giraffe. It would be awful if that happened. Good gracious. I know.
Just don't take out anybody with you.
Well, I know exactly. You gotta clear the path. Here comes the giraffe. Well, we gotta look at these gas prices. I'm telling you, I'm pissed. I don't know if you can do something with some of these meetings you go to, but somebody's gonna have to shake the tree on this one because gas is twenty-seven cents more than it was last year at this time. And I believe we're up eighteen cents from last week's average. So the, it looks like the gate on International Golf Parkway is at three oh four. We've got the seven eleven at three oh four. We've got Love's Travel Shop. Have you guys been there yet? That sounds like a, do they have a back room?
That's on two, that's on two oh six.
Is it? Okay.
It's the, it's the truck stop.
Is it really? Okay, so that's a lot lizard specialist, three nineteen today.
We see it all the time.
BP, that's luxury gas at three twenty-nine. We've got the BP on US one at three thirty-nine. So you gotta check your BP's, baby. You can save ten cents if you go to the one on Center Place Way. They got the Circle K out on two ten at three thirty-nine and nobody else decided to do any reporting on that.
All right, we got Wawa, we got Wawa at three forty-four and Costco at three oh four.
Really?
And I can tell you, I bought gas for my boat on Saturday and Sunday and it was four cents higher on Sunday than what it was on Saturday.
What happened?
You know, it's just, it just, it's, it changes that quickly.
I don't understand what's going on, but if you are regulating gas prices and you might need to go to jail, you might need to get out. Are you or someone you know in trouble with the law and need of immediate bail assistance? Look no further than the world-class and superhuman being Chris Lucero Bail Bonds. Never get embarrassed if you get arrested. Just give him a call. He has seen it all. I swear to you, he's an incredible human being. His team of experienced professionals are available twenty-four seven to provide fast and reliable bail services, ensuring that you or a loved one can get in, or no, not get in, get out of jail, right? Give them a call, nine oh four eight two two bail. That's nine oh four eight two 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 four five, the number one name in the bail game.
All right, I know, I know you like to read and stuff like that, but check out what's going on in the Suez Canal.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the oil is having to be shipped all the way around the tip of Africans that are being able to get cut through.
Oh, for peace sake.
It's because of pirates and I can't remember the exact enunciation of it, so I'm not even gonna try.
Okay.
But there's a group there and we now have US forces. We have US forces in, in the Suez Canal, but if you read about that, you're gonna be like.
Ridiculous.
It's ridiculous because almost eighty percent of the oil's having to go almost three days further.
Ain't nobody have time for that? This is a mess. Get out of here. We're trying to do something here, pirates.
So read about the Suez and US government cannae put your thumb on those guys.
So rude. Can't they attack like a recycling or something? Go do something else. Well, speaking of what they can do, they can check out the music report. Of course, that's brought to you by Visit St. Augustine and Griffin Service. We've got live music mic check tonight. Who do you think is at the Mill Top Tavern at noon?
Jim Lamb.
Yes, for the win, Jim Lamb, Mark Hart and Reggie Sterrett at Trade Wins at one, Johnny Lawrence at Pierre's Pub at one, Joshua at Tennessee Worthy at Mill Top Tavern at four thirty, Micah Gilliam at Prohibition Kitchen at six, Stu Weaver at Harry's at six, Baby Gray at Pierre's Pub at six, and Alex Richmond at Cortez's at seven PM.
That's a long Monday report.
For a Monday, right? Yeah.
Long Monday report.
We, we went all the way down to letter H on that one, yeah. That music report is brought to you by Griffin Service. All AC plumbing and electrical companies are not created equal. Griffin Service understands choosing the right company when you need AC plumbing or electrical service is a huge decision. We help or they help hundreds of local families just like every week, just like you every week with problems getting fixed and getting you back to what really matters. You see Griffin everywhere, dozens of times a week, and when you do, it always means legendary service. If you have an AC plumbing or electrical issue, give Griffin a call, nine oh four five hundred twenty-six fifty-three. That number again, nine oh four five hundred twenty-six fifty-three. All right, sad story to talk about. I know this is a beloved figure too. We have a sixty-year-old bicyclist struck by a car in St. Augustine. Neighbors believe that speeding was involved. This sixty-year-old bicyclist's name is Kerry Sparks, is in critical condition today after being hit by a car in St. Augustine South. The accident occurred late Wednesday evening outside the, at the Valencia subdivision. The St. John's County Sheriff's Office is investigating the incident. Some neighbors believe speeding along US one is to blame. We've got some residents that suspect that speeding is possibly racing were involved. Oh, no, I hate this. He mentioned that the neighbors have been pushing for a stop sign to slow traffic down. If, there's a quote here from one of the residents, if one of my kids gets hit by a car from speeding because we can't put speed bumps in, then we're not going to pay for it, then they're going to pay for it and not monetarily wise either. Jeez, those words are something.
Sounds very Florida.
I know, very, yeah. Let's get some change here. But Florida ranks near the top nation for bike-related crashes. In St. John's County alone, there have been thirty-one bicycle crashes from the start of this year. Duval County has seen over a hundred and forty crashes in the same time period. Jenkins believes that construction of more roads in St. Augustine is contributing to reckless driving along US one. Between Watson Road and Old Multry Road, there's been fatal accidents all the time. You're going to hear that Station Fifty-One going back and up, up and down the street, he said. Since the crash, many people have been sending well wishes to Kerry on Facebook. I know this human being travels up and down the US one, actually cleaning the sides of our streets, making sure that everything, you know, keeps on the up and up over there. So it's a sad story to, to report. keeps, uh, on the up and up over there." So it's a sad story to, to report today, especially with somebody that cares so much about our community.
And so, someone in the comments said that, uh, they confirmed it was texting and driving.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, so I mean, that's, I mean, and even, I can tell you, like, the most time I ever spent walking on the street was, uh, in, when I did my walk to DC. And you could see people, you know, cause I walked against traffic, and you're going.
You know it, you know what they're doing, yeah.
And when they got up to you, you could see them, "Oh, they're still, they're still just like this."
Right.
And I, I do it more than I should, and I really try, try and not do that.
Yeah.
It's still, it's so dangerous. Um, you know, and I hear stories like this, and it kinda becomes a reminder, and it should be a reminder to everybody else. It's not that important. It can wait or pull over if it's that important, pull over.
Do you think it's an, also an infrastructure issue? Do you think we need more bike lanes and things designated, or does that just make more confusion?
Uh, I, I mean, some bike lanes make sense, some bike lanes don't. I mean, the ones that make the most sense are the ones that separate them from the road, and they still have, you know, bike paths.
Yeah.
I'm more of a bike path person than I am a bike lane person.
Right.
You know, and, uh, but, you know, you get pushed back from neighbors on that, too.
I gotta tell you, I mean, it's white knuckling down Holmes Road all the time, cause you just know, cause they literally have no room to, to ride a bike.
There's no sidewalk there at all.
Nothing, yeah.
No sidewalk there at all. Um, yeah, and that's where Home Again is, which is one of our other stories, and it's, it's one of our big concerns.
Yeah, that is something. Um, sidewalks, what's the, do you, okay, like, up north, it was a thing, if you rode your bike on the sidewalk. Is it socially acceptable down here to be able to ride a bike on a, on a sidewalk?
I think it's become more socially acceptable probably since even you've left, um, you know, I think it's more, it, you, you left up north 20 years ago, right?
Yeah, 16, yeah.
16 years ago. So I, I think even in the last 10 years, it's been like, "All right, yeah, you can ride your bike on the sidewalk."
Right, yeah.
Because it's just safer.
Yeah, it's safer.
And people realize it, and it's just kind of accepted, you know, but still don't be a jerk about it, like, you know, there's, there's people that are on the, on their bikes that are just still dangerous, you know, because especially with the new e-bikes, they're going faster and faster.
Right, those are, they're powered, so they go, yeah, they definitely travel faster, which you have less control over. Yeah, interesting. I mean, we definitely gotta do something and rally. I mean, this is so sad.
But I do think it's become more prevalent. Like, when I was a kid, you'd never rode your bike on the sidewalk. You rode your bike on the street, but it was,
Right.
maybe 20% of the traffic that we see now.
I must've been about eight or nine, I was hit by a, a, a car, which explains a lot, I understand. But it was like, just they, they clipped my front tire. I was gonna, like, cross the street, and I was like waiting, so I wasn't moving, but they like clipped it, and so I would just remember the bike flying up in the air, and then my body hitting the ground, but it was just like, wow. I couldn't imagine if I was actually moving, and that would add to the, you know, to the impact. So yeah, it is, it is a scary thing, and I think people need to be a little bit more cognizant of, you know, when they're behind the wheel, stay focused on that. Um, but yeah, I know. I, I, and there's no right answer, I mean.
Was that your worst bicycle accident?
Um, no, the worst one was when, um, they finally took the training wheels off, and I was riding the bike, and I went up on the hill. And then, of course, the boy bikes back then had the bar like in the front, and so like I crashed my nuts on the way down. That was the worst I've ever felt in my life. I'm pretty sure that I cannot have children because of that moment.
Yeah, I think, I think that's it.
I definitely think that. My voice got a little bit higher, yeah.
I, I have, I have one of those moments going, going over, uh, uh, one of the jumps that we had made ourselves, that back in the day, you made your own jumps. Um, you know.
Yeah, I remember.
And I came a little too forward and just kept going. But my worst accident, I ran over a basset hound. It was coming out barking at me, you know.
Yeah, I know, they chase ya, right.
And, and I kinda like, like, he mistimed it. I didn't see him in time, and my front wheel caught him, and all of us went rolling, me, the basset hound, the bike, I mean, all of us went rolling.
The dog okay?
Dog was fine.
Of course.
Yeah, he, 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 he was a little embarrassed, you know, like, "Hey, I overshot the barking situation."
Yeah.
Cause it was one of those dogs that chased bikes.
I wonder if he ever chased the bike ever since.
I don't know, I don't know.
No, no, he still did.
I just never understood. He lived like eight streets down, and we knew if he was out, he was gonna come after you.
Oh, yeah, those dogs, yeah. Like the Sandlot dog. Yeah, um, I, I just never understood bikes, because, or, you know, like, they had the, the bar for boy bikes, and then the girl bikes had like the bend, like, that didn't make sense to me structurally.
I, I think, I think the theory was, in, in most cases, the, uh, women are shorter than men.
I think it was because ladies had to get, had dresses back in the day, and that was an easy way for them to get on the bike.
That makes way more sense. I, I just was going with the short thing.
Okay.
Cause I was like, "Man, it would be so much easier," cause I was, I was always short. I was like, "Ooh, it'd be so much easier if I could just ride that one."
Yeah, it would be, yeah, okay, yes, for all men out there.
You didn't have this problem. I was that kid that stopped at the stop sign, and I was leaning on the one leg like, "Oh."
Oh, yeah, okay, I had a friend like that. Joseph Kilch, yes, he had a lean on the sign, yes.
Where you just kinda stopped and put both feet down flat, you know? No, at, at the stop signs, I stopped at on my bike. I was like, "Oh, gosh."
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, let's get going. Once I'm going, I'm good.
That's the Deland lean, it's not the Palacaleen on that.
It's different, it's different for a 14-year-old from Deland.
Yeah, God bless.
Who hadn't grown yet, and all his friends had. But I'm not better.
No, not at all.
I'm not better.
Not at all, because I'd like to see what they look like now, thank you very much, yeah.
They got back troubles.
See, exactly, yeah.
Actually, all of them, they're all about the same height. We're all about the same height, yeah. Except for Sid, he's like, he's like you, he's a drunk.
Oh, is he? God bless the beanstalks, yeah. Well, we're gonna move into a story coming up here with, uh, mid-range celebrities open up some sports bar. We'll see what happens there. But before we get into that, we're gonna talk about Fidus Roofing, your local roofing experts in St. Johns County. They are master elite contractors because they take pride in every shingle they lay. What sets them apart? They're not just building roofs, they're building a better community. Fidus Roofing believes in giving back, and their commitment to St. Johns County shines with their support of various children's organizations like Big Brothers Big Sisters of St. Johns County, The Boy Scouts, and Inc. Investing in Kids. With Fidus Roofing, you're not only getting a quality roof, but you're also investing in the future of these incredible organizations. Choose Fidus Roofing for top-notch service and a big heart for the community, and give them a call today, 904-355-RUFOF. That's 904-355-RUFOF.
They do pavers.
And gutters. Yeah.
Nice. All right, Moronic Monday, Justin Crapperlake, excuse me, Timberlake is opening up a sports bar with Tiger Woods. Um, pop failure Justin Timberlake recently arrested. Oh, my apologies, did that fall out? Pop failure. Pop star-ish Justin Timberlake recently arrested for drunk driving.
Just cause he didn't work out with Taylor, you have this.
No, nothing with Taylor, it was Britney baby, like, let's get this right. Who is mother, okay, yeah. Not nice, and Janet Jackson, not nice what he did to those ladies, and he even apologized, and I do not accept it. However, um, crap star Justin Timberlake recently arrested for drunk driving has been granted permission to start planning a luxury sports bar in Scotland. I can't even do it in the US.
Really?
Uh, Timberlake and golfing legend Tiger Woods also had a DUI arrest in 2017 will convert a New Picture House Cinema in St. Andrews in a bar called T Squared Social. Timbercrap and Woods are shareholders in Nexus Luxury Collection, the company behind the transformation. The venue will feature sports simulators, duck pin bowling, darts, and retain two cinema screens. The idea came to Woods and Timbercrap while playing golf at their development in the Bahamas. Woods, who won the champ, Open Championship at St. Andrews in 2000 and 2005, has a strong connection in that area, and Timbercrap has golfed there several times. And sang off key. Uh, Timberlake was arrested, I wanna drive this home, was arrested for DWI in mid-June in Long Island because he feels entitled that he couldn't take a driver or an Uber, and addressed the incident during a concert in Chicago, saying, "It's been a tough week." Yeah, how about a life buzzer?
Yeah, just be glad you didn't hit anybody.
I know, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I don't have a whole lot of sympathy for that, but I mean.
Well, it's just funny that they both have our DUIs, they're opening up a bar.
Hey, throw a dart in any room.
Could there be a charity element we could tie into this maybe, and that could be a saving grace?
They're just famous. Uh, you throw a dart in any room you walk into, and especially at any of our fundraisers.
I know, right?
Yeah, so they.
What's duck pin bowling, does anyone know?
It's like the little ones, and it's like a ball that fits in your hand.
You're kidding me. Oh, I love this. Look at the mug shots here. What beauties. Nice. Go to a lace med spa, they'll fix your face.
Business partners.
Yeah, perfect. There's a winning team right there. Mid-level celebrities, doing it for the bars in Scotland.
Four billion dollars. Um, yeah, you can be successful too. You know, but it's in Scotland, I, okay, when you said St. Andrews, okay, it makes sense.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's where, that's where it kinda makes sense.
Well, if you were there, obviously, would you visit this bar, or would you?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you would?
I'd check it out. I don't have the anger you have towards these people.
I don't have anger, I'm at peace.
No, you do.
I have reality, I have reality.
Your reality is that your anger is what it is. Your reality is your anger.
Because that guy's not nice.
The people you've never met.
All right, well, are you kidding me? I met Lance Bass, which is directly connected to, uh, Justin Timberlake. So I am in line, and I am the boy band reject of this community, so I will tell you, I know all about Timbercrap.
You were too tall to be a, a, a boy band member.
Way too tall, you guys. I went into the audition, and they were like, "Thank you, next." I went, "Oh my God, I didn't even do anything yet."
They all have to be the same height.
They do, yes. They just put me in the back with Lance.
I was too short, you were too tall.
All right, well, we finish here. Oh, no, we not, we have two more stories left today. We have hundreds gathered in St. August. Oh, this is a good one. They raised money for the St. Johns County Firefighters Fund. We talked to them last week. Hundreds of people gathered in St. Augustine on Sunday for a weekend fishing tournament to raise money for St. Johns County Firefighters Benevolent Fund. The event, which concluded on Sunday, featured live music, bounce houses, and raffles, those are Pete's favorites, uh, creating a fun-filled atmosphere for families. Over 120 boats, that's awesome, cause they only were reporting 100, so they got another 20, that's nice. Participated in the competition with participants weighing their catches after a day on the water. All proceeds of the tournament will support Fallen Firefighter Memorial Wall at the Fire Rescue Headquarters, which will honor seven names, two who died in the line of duty, and five who passed away while serving. So far, the fund raised, um, over $22,000, with more donations still being collected. This was the first fundraiser held by St. Johns County Firefighter Association, but the organizers plan to make it an annual event. I love that. "They're humbled by the support," said David Stevens, president of the SJFA. "I love to see when the community comes together. We love to know that the community is still behind us. I mean, honestly, we truly are." What an incredible project, right?
That's great. No, I, and, and, um, just wonderful people taking care of their own, and it, I mean, it's such a, uh, a, a tough situation when they, I mean, they see horror every day.
On a daily basis, yeah.
You know, we, we, we report on some of the stuff, but they're there saving lives, like, I'm, I'm sure they were the first ones to the guy who got hit on the, on the bike.
Yeah.
You know, these, these guys are saving lives every single day, and they're seeing some of the most horrific things you're gonna see outside of a, uh, you know, a battlefield.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, they deserve, they deserve the same respect we give to veterans.
Talk about that memorial wall and the importance of having something like that for families and things, like, is it, is it really like a nice memorial moment?
And you nailed exactly what it's for. It's for the families.
Okay.
It's for, it's for the families. Um, the guys that are there, they, they understand and they know, and they're gonna, they have fresh memories of the people that, that are on that wall. But that, that one's for the families and the, the children and the grandchildren of, hey, here's where your granddad did this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that, and that's important.
That's awesome.
That's important. That's the legacy of, uh, um, that's important to make sure it's shared from family, cause having family pride is, is, uh, I think, waning.
I gotta tell you the importance of what you just said too, because, you know, my dad passed, and, um, was 37 years in the military, and my niece never got a chance to meet him. But we have an opportunity, in which my sister just did, she took her up to Delaware so that she could visit dad, and like where he is at this like really specific veterans cemetery, and like, it's a real moment of connection, even though they're no longer there, but you can still see the legacy that they leave behind. I think that's so important.
Yeah, no, it, it's, it's creating the attachment.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you can create that attachment, that you can hold on to, and it's, it's, like I said, it's, uh, I think it's something that we've not done as well as some of our previous generations of, the legacy of our family.
Yeah. Hey, another legacy thing that we do in town, um, is really important, is Dining with Dig, Dining with Dignity. Uh, this, again, this is for Home Again St. John's. So on July 2nd, a very successful Dining with Dignity with St. Cyprian's Episcopal Church um, just happened. This is a wonderful meal program that serves over 55,000 people annually. I had no idea.
Yeah, it's 365 days a week, or days a year. Um, it's 55, and those numbers, um, we, we do it downtown, uh, every day, and then out at homes, where we have Home Again, and then when we move over here to, uh, uh, State Road 16, we'll have it at the United Service Center there.
Okay.
Um, but it's 100% volunteer-based, um, with, and it goes through, it goes through Home Again, but Dining with Dignity is its own independent group that we, we recognize, and it, right now, it's, uh, it's run by, uh, Joe Barone, and he just does, Patron, he does an absolute amazing job of coordinating volunteers and stuff like that, but we never really have enough.
Hmm.
Um, you know, and, uh, the dining is up right now, uh, it kinda fluctuates.
What is it, though? Like, what is like the basic explanation?
What it is, is it's to guarantee the homeless, uh, an opportunity to have a meal at least once a day.
Oh, nice.
And it's, uh, it's located, uh, uh, right near Washington Street, uh, uh, Sunday through, uh, Thursday, um, across from Dog Rose there, there's, we, the city has given us access to a parking lot, uh, to serve there. And then because of the traffic on Friday and Saturday, we moved down to, uh, the Eddie Vickers Park.
Oh, Ribera, okay, gotcha. At 6 PM, got it.
Yeah, so, and it, it's, it's basically, it allows us to lay eyes on the homeless.
Yeah.
And, you know, see who's doing okay, who's not doing okay. Um, the city has provided us now, just recently, uh, with security.
Nice.
Um, because sometimes.
You never know, yeah.
Mental illness that's involved in the homeless, and, and a lot of our volunteers are elderly, um, elderly, uh, people from the church, you know, that don't want a confrontation and all, where they have to separate, and so it's, it's nice that the city has provided us with that. Um, but it's, it's been, we've been doing it for, I wanna say, 12, 13 years now?
And you're saying it's growing and growing?
Yeah, and, and, uh, it kinda fluctuates, it kinda goes through dips and, and those things too. Um, but no matter, no matter what the weather is, Dining with Dignity is there.
What does a volunteer shift look like? Is that something like it's an all-night thing, like 6 to 9, or is this more of like a 6 to 8 kinda moment, like?
It's, 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 um, if you're preparing the meals, it's a little bit more than that, but if you're just serving the meals, it's basically an hour and a half.
Cool, okay.
So, um, and it's, and it's usually about five, it's usually about 5:15 to like around 7, somewhere around there.
Cause I'm just thinking like a corporate office would be cool to like, everybody, like they do for Habitat or something, they can rally together and do this. I think it's very rewarding.
Yeah, and, and if you're interested, if you have a group that's interested in doing it, but, I mean, we, we do like people to be consistent, cause usually what it is, is this church will take one day a month.
Okay.
And that's always their day.
Oh, I gotcha.
They're always the second Tuesday or something like that. So we know it's in the calendar, um, and, you know, don't, don't commit unless you're, you're really gonna be there, and you need to serve. It's usually about, uh, 80 to 90 meals.
Okay.
Uh, a night.
Age limit, can like high schoolers get hours, or is that not really?
They can get hours, but they have to have, uh, uh, adult supervision with them.
Nice, so, cool. I mean, this is awesome. If you guys are out there and you wanna help volunteer, please call Home Again St. John's at 904-904-464-365382. I have the area code written twice, so there you go. That's why we said 904 twice.
But you can go, you can go to the Home Again, Home Again, uh, St. John's, uh, website, or even their Facebook page, and, uh, do, do, uh, message or something like that.
Okay.
And either myself or Ellen, usually Ellen or.
Love Ellen.
Or Rachel will get back with you.
That's awesome. Ellen Waldron, she's an amazing lady.
Oh, she's awesome. She's my work wife.
I love that, that's great. She's an incredible lady. She probably keeps you balanced.
Rebecca knows when the phone rings late at night, she's like, "Is it Ellen?"
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Ellen.
Approval. Well, with that said, we need your approval with the comments. How do you wanna check the comments today, Troy?
I'm gonna march through this manic Monday, creating memories with our mini watchers.
And while you do that, I'll be talking about Bates, Hewitt, and Floyd. They set the standard for your home is more than just a house, it's where your memories are made. They provide peace of mind and insurance to protect your biggest investments. Having a reliable local insurance agency like Bates, Hewitt, and Floyd, with over 50 years of experience in homeowners insurance, auto, commercial, and benefits, can be a valuable asset in navigating the unpredictable insurance market. They have the expertise to help you find the right coverage for your needs. Kristy Lawrenson, we love her, is readily available at their St. Augustine office, conveniently situated across from UF Health. She offers complimentary policy reviews, which is helpful service for anyone looking to ensure their insurance coverage is up to date and suitable for their needs. I know we have Kristy coming on the show later on this month, talking about all the updates that she got from, uh, the convention, but give them a call, ask for Kristy. month, talking about all the updates that she got from, uh, the convention, but give them a call, ask for Kristi, 904-794-5455. And since nineteen sixty-seven, BNS Signs has supplied St. Augustine and the surrounding region with high-quality signs that help your customers, uh, see your standout brand. St. Augustine and St. Johns County, are you ready to boost your business? Choose BNS Signs, your creative hub for captivating signage and media marketing. They turn your business into a local legend. They are known for their eye-catching storefront signs and intention-grabbing billboards, we know all about that. BNS Signs is your print and digital media go-to. No project, big or small, just give them a call, 904-824-3323. All right, Troy, what you got?
All right, so, uh, some of the inventions or, or inventors people said they'd like to meet is the inventor of a deodorant.
Oh, they need a raise. That's a good one.
Uh, the inventor of toilet paper, but isn't that John D. Crapper?
Yeah, it might be, yeah. I never understood the scent of toilet paper. When were you supposed to smell that?
Yeah, so, uh, I think one person wanted to meet the inventor of the bra so they can smack him around.
Oh, that's funny. I know that one. If you watch the movie Beaches, they talk about that.
Brazier?
His name is Otto Van Titzling.
Titzling.
Inventor in Crap.
I thought Titzling, Titzling didn't get the invention and Brazier did.
Oh, you're right, it was Brazier!
Titzling came in second.
That's right, he was the one that crept in, yes. Oh, that's such a great movie.
All right, um, and, uh, see, uh, also, I was talking about the Suez and it's the Hootie Rebels.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Correctly, but that's, uh,
They're dopey, they need to get over themselves.
Yeah.
Come on, ego.
We didn't need to smack them into shape so our oil prices go down.
Oh, try on more jewelry, I don't know what to say.
All right, creator of the first boat.
Oh, oh, that's a good one.
Yeah.
That's a really good one.
Yeah.
How'd they know how to float? I mean, we know the Wright brothers did the airplanes, so.
I think, I think they saw wood floating and was like, oh, I can hop on that.
That makes nice, yeah.
All right.
All right, we're going into Stoitem Stat, Troy.
All right, Stoitem Stat, um, on this day, July 8th, nineteen fifty-one, the city of Paris, where the Olympics is being held,
Hmm.
the city of Paris, and now it's, add like seventy-five years to it, or seventy-three, whatever it is, seventy-three years to it, um, it turned two thousand years old.
Whoa.
All right, so we're bragging about our five hundred years.
I know, we're like a pipsqueak.
You know, our, our four-fiftieth, and we're coming up on five hundred. Yeah, we haven't even got to five hundred yet.
That's ridiculous. They're two thousand.
They, they turned two thousand in nineteen fifty-one.
Oh my god. That's forever.
All right, so, so,
You look good, Paris.
Yeah.
Have you ever been to Paris?
Uh, no, I have not. I have not been to Paris.
I heard it's like all and around, and you have to like figure out where, yeah.
I heard, I heard, um, because of their border control and some of the things that they're having, that Paris is not as safe as it once was.
Yeah, true story.
So, it kinda, kinda, when, when you get like travel warnings on the city,
Yeah.
I'm like, okay, I'll take those for real.
Maybe not, yeah, that's a good.
Those for real, but they were two thousand in nineteen fifty-one.
Wow. That's incredible.
Well, they're two thousand and sixteen years older than me.
Yeah. But a distant relative.
And you guys called me a boomer.
Right, jeez, what is that? A banger?
Yeah.
Wow. Well, that's Stoitem Stat. It's brought to you by St. Augie's Pizza. Craving delicious pizza in St. Augustine? Look no further than the world-famous St. Augie's Pizza, located on the corner of King and Riberia. They're serving up mouth-watering slices of heaven from classic margarita to loaded Grandma Supreme. They've got all your pizza cravings covered. Come grab a slice, I'm sure you'll see us down there, or a whole pie, St. Augie's Pizza, not today, but tomorrow, baby. Yes, that's right. All right, plugs, Troy.
All right, a couple things, just a quick update, cuz Tracy, uh, came in with this. Um, the gentleman who got hit on the bike had surgery and he's doing pretty well.
Hey, good, thanks, Trace.
A lot of love out there for that, and, and also, um, watch out for the rain at 3:12, and love to my buddy Ricky, who's gonna be, be in surgery tomorrow, so he's gonna miss the show tomorrow.
All right, prayers up, um, absolutely. And this afternoon, we've got world-famous Kate Batzel as co-host for Stoideau. We're gonna be talking to Arian Bueller. He's the graphic designer. He's made some cool things for the Rolling Stones and Guns N' Roses. Let's welcome to the jungle at three o'clock today. All right, everybody, that is our show for this morning. Thank you so much for tuning in, showing up and showing out. Pete will be back in studio tomorrow, don't have any fear. I love you guys, we'll see you at three.
Bye-bye.